Good morning, everyone. It is nine o'clock and we do have a reform and I'll call December 27th, 28th, 29th, 30th, 31st, 32th, 33rd, 34th, 35th, 36th, 37th, 38th, 39th, 40th, 41th, 41st, 42th, 43rd, 44th, 45th, 46th, 47th, 48th, 49th, 50th, 51th, 52th, 53th, 54th, 55th, 51st, 52th, 53th, 54th, 55th, 56th, 57th, 58th, 59th, 60th, 61th, 62th, 63th, 64th, 65th, 66th, 67th, 68th, 69th, 70th, 71th, 72th, 73th, 74th, 75th, 76th, 77th, 78th, 79th, 80th, 81th, 82th, 83rd, 84th, 85th, 86th, 87th, 88th, 89th, 90th, 91th, 92th, 93th, 94th, 95th, 91st, 92th, 93th, 94th, 95th, 96th, 97th, 98th, 99th, 100th, 101th, 102th, 103th, 104th, 105th, 106th, 107th, 108th, 109th, 110th, 111th, 112th, 113th, 114th, 115th, 116th, 117th, 118th, 119th, 111th, 112th, 113th, 114th, 115th, 116th, 117th, 118th, 119th, 120th, 121th, 122th, 123th, 124th, 125th, 126th, 127th, 128th, 129th, 130th, 131th, 132th, 133th, 134th, 135th, 136th, 137th, 138th, 139th, 140th, 141th, 142th, 143th, 144th, 145th, 146th, 147th, 148th, 149th, 150th, 151th, 151st, 152th, 153th, 154th, 155th, 156th, 157th, 158th, 159th, 160th, 161th, 162th, 163th, 164th, 161st, 152th, 153th, 154th, 155th, 156th, 157th, 158th, 159th, 160th, 161th, 162th, 163th, 164th, 165th, 166th, 167th, 168th, 169th, 170th, 171th, 172th, 173th, 174th, 175th, 176th, 177th, 178th, 178th, 179th, 180th, 181th, 182th, 183th, 184th, 185th, 186th, 187th, 188th, 189th, 190th, 191th, 192th, 193th, 194th, 195th, 196th, 197th, 198th, 199th, 200th, 201th, 202th, 203th, 201st, 202th, 203th, 204th, 205th, 206th, 207th, 208th, 209th, 210th, 211th, 212th, 213th, 215th, 216th, 217th, 218th, 219th, 220th, 221th, 222th, 223th, 224th, 225th, 226th, 227th, 229th, 230th, 231th, 232th, 233th, 234th, 235th, 236th, 237th, 238th, 239th, 240th, 241th, 243th, 244th, 245th, 246th, 247th, 248th, 249th, 250th, 251th, 252th, 253th, 254th, 255th, 256th, 257th, 258th, 259th, 260th, 261th, 262th, 263th, 264th, 265th, 266th, 267th, 268th, 269th, 270th, 271th, 272th, 273th, 274th, 275th, 276th, 277th, 278th, 279th, 280th, 281th, 282th, 283th, 284th, 285th, 286th, 287th, 288th, 289th, 290th, 291th, 292th, 293th, 294th, 295th, 296th, 297th, 298th, 299th, 300th, 301th, 302th, 303th, 304th, 305th, 306th, 307th, 308th, 309th, 310th, 311th, 312th, 313th, 314th, 315th, 316th, 317th, 318th, 319th, 320th, 321th, 322th, 323th, 324th, 325th, 326th, 327th, 328th, 329th, 330th, 331th, 332th, 333th, 334th, 335th, 336th, 337th, 338th, 339th, 340th, 341th, 342th, 343th, 344th, 345th, 346th, 347th, 348th, 349th, 350th, 351th, 352th, 353th, 354th, 355th, 356th, 357th, 358th, 359th, 360th, 361th, 362th, 363th, 364th, 365th, 366th, 367th, 368th, 369th, 370th, 371th, 372th, 375th, 376th, 377th, 378th, 379th, 380th, 381th, 382th, 383th, 384th, 385th, 386th, 387th, 389th, 390th, 391th, 392th, 393th, 394th, 395th, 396th, 397th, 398th, 399th, 400th, 401th, 403rd, 404th, 405th, 406th, 407th, 408th, 409th, 410th, 411th, 412th, 413th, 414th, 415th, 417th, 418th, 419th, 420th, 421th, 422th, 423th, 424th, 425th, 426th, 427th, 428th, 429th, 430th, 431th, 432th, 433th, 434th, 435th, 436th, 437th, 438th, 439th, 440th, 441th, 442th, 443rd, 444th, 445th, 446th, 447th, 448th, 449th, 450th, 451th, 452th, 453th, 454th, 455th, 456th, 457th, 458th, 459th, 460th, 461th, 462th, 463th, 464th, 465th, 466th, 467th, 468th, 470th, 471th, 472th, 473th, 474th, 475th, 476th, 477th, 478th, 479th, 480th, 481th, 482th, 483rd, 484th, 485th, 486th, 487th, 488th, 489th, 490th, 491th, 492th, 493th, 494th, 495th, 496th, 497th, 498th, 499th, 500th, 501th, 502th, 503th, 504th, 505th, 506th, 507th, 508th, 510th, 511th, 512th, 513th, 514th, 515th, 516th, 517th, 518th, 519th, 520th, 521th, 522th, 525th, 526th, 527th, 528th, 529th, 530th, 531th, 532th, 533th, 534th, 535th, 536th, 537th, 539th, 540th, 541th, 542th, 543th, 544th, 545th, 546th, 547th, 548th, 549th, 550th, 551th, 552th, 553th, 554th, 555th, 556th, 557th, 558th, 559th, 560th, 561th, 562th, 563th, 564th, 568th, 569th, 570th, 571th, 572th, 573th, 574th, 575th, 576th, 577th, 578th, 579th, 580th, 584th, 585th, 586th, 587th, 588th, 589th, 590th, 591th, 592th, 593th, 594th, 595th, 596th, 598th, 599th, 600th, 601th, 602th, 603th, 604th, 605th, 606th, 607th, 608th, 609th, 610th, 615th, 616th, 617th, 618th, 619th, 620th, 621th, 622th, 623th, 624th, 625th, 626th, 627th, 629th, 630th, 631th, 632th, 633th, 634th, 635th, 636th, 637th, 638th, 639th, 640th, 641th, 644th, 645th, 646th, 647th, 648th, 649th, 650th, 651th, 652th, 653th, 654th, 655th, 656th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663th, 664th, 665th, 666th, 667th, 668th, 669th, 670th, 678th, 679th, 680th, 681th, 682th, 683th, 684th, 685th, 686th, 687th, 688th, 689th, 690th, 691th, 692th, 693th, 694th, 695th, 696th, 697th, 698th, 699th, 700th, 701th, 702th, 703th, 704th, 705th, 706th, 707th, 708th, 709th, 710th, 711th, 712th, 713th, 715th, 716th, 717th, 718th, 719th, 720th, 721th, 722th, 723th, 724th, 725th, 726th, 727th, 728th, 729th, 730th, 731th, 732th, 733th, 734th, 735th, 736th, 737th, 738th, 739th, 740th, 741th, 742th, 743th, 744th, 745th, 746th, 747th, 748th, 749th, 750th, 751th, 754th, 755th, 756th, 757th, 758th, 759th, 760th, 761th, 762th, 763th, 764th, 765th, 770th, 771th, 772th, 773th, 774th, 775th, 776th, 777th, 778th, 779th, 780th, 781th, 783rd, 784th, 785th, 786th, 787th, 788th, 789th, 790th, 791th, 792th, 793th, 794th, 798th, 799th, 800th, 801th, 802th, 803th, 804th, 805th, 806th, 807th, 808th, 809th, 810th, 811th, 812th, 813th, 814th, 815th, 816th, 817th, 818th, 819th, 820th, 821th, 822th, 823th, 824th, 825th, 826th, 827th, 828th, 829th, 830th, 831th, 832th, 833th, 835th, 836th, 837th, 838th, 839th, 840th, 841th, 842th, 843th, 844th, 845th, 846th, 847th, 848th, 849th, 850th, 851th, 852th, 853th, 854th, 855th, 856th, 857th, 858th, 859th, 861th, 862th, 863th, 864th, 865th, 866th, 867th, 868th, 869th, 870th, 871th, 872th, 875th, 876th, 877th, 878th, 879th, 880th, 881th, 882th, 883th, 884th, 885th, 886th, 889th, 890th, 891th, 892th, 893th, 894th, 895th, 896th, 897th, 898th, 899th, 900th, 903rd, 904th, 905th, 906th, 907th, 908th, 909th, 910th, 911th, 912th, 913th, 914th, 918th, 919th, 920th, 921th, 922th, 923th, 924th, 925th, 926th, 927th, 928th, 929th, 930th, 931th, 932th, 933th, 934th, 935th, 936th, 937th, 938th, 939th, 940th, 941th, 945th, 946th, 947th, 948th, 949th, 950th, 951th, 952th, 953th, 954th, 955th, 956th, 958th, 959th, 960th, 961th, 962th, 963th, 964th, 965th, 966th, 967th, 968th, 969th, 970th, 971th, 972th, 973th, 974th, 975th, 976th, 977th, 978th, 979th, 980th, 981th, 983rd, 984th, 985th, 986th, 987th, 988th, 989th, 990th, 991th, 992th, 993th, 994th, 995th, 996th, 997th, 998th, 999th, 1000th, 1001th, 1002th, 1003th, 1004th, 1005th, 1006th, 1010th, 1011th, 1012th, 1013th, 1014th, 1015th, 1016th, 1017th, 1018th, 1019th, 1020th, 1024th, 1025th, 1026th, 1027th, 1028th, 1029th, 1030th, 1031th, 1032th, 1033th, 1034th, 1038th, 1039th, 1040th, 1041th, 1042th, 1043th, 1044th, 1045th, 1046th, 1047th, 1048th, 1049th, 1050th, 1051th, 1052th, 1053th, 1054th, 1055th, 1056th, 1057th, 1058th, 1059th, 1060th, 1061th, 1062th, 1063th, 1064th, 1065th, 1066th, 1067th, 1068th, 1069th, 1070th, 1074th, 1075th, 1076th, 1077th, 1078th, 1079th, 1080th, 1081th, 1082th, 1083th, 1084th, 1088th, 1089th, 1090th, 1091th, 1092th, 1093th, 1094th, 1095th, 1096th, 1097th, 1098th, 1099th, 1100th, 1101th, 1102th, 1103th, 1104th, 1105th, 1106th, 1107th, 1108th, 1109th, 1110th, 1111th, 1112th, 1113th, 1114th, 1115th, 1116th, 1117th, 1118th, 1119th, 1120th, 1124th, 1125th, 1126th, 1127th, 1128th, 1129th, 1130th, 1131th, 1132th, 1133th, 1134th, 1138th, 1139th, 1140th, 1141th, 1142th, 1143th, 1144th, 1145th, 1146th, 1147th, 1148th, 1149th, 1150th, 1151th, 1152th, 1153th, 1154th, 1155th, 1156th, 1157th, 1158th, 1159th, 1160th, 1161th, 1162th, 1163th, 1164th, 1165th, 1166th, 1167th, 1168th, 1169th, 1170th, 1178th, 1179th, 1180th, 1181th, 1182th, 1183th, 1184th, 1185th, 1186th, 1187th, 1188th, 1190th, 1191th, 1192th, 1193th, 1194th, 1195th, 1196th, 1197th, 1198th, 1199th, 1200th, 1201th, 1202th, 1203th, 1204th, 1205th, 1206th, 1207th, 1208th, 1209th, 1210th, 1211th, 1215th, 1216th, 1217th, 1218th, 1219th, 1220th, 1221th, 1222th, 1223th, 1224th, 1225th, 1229th, 1230th, 1231th, 1232th, 1233th, 1234th, 1235th, 1236th, 1237th, 1238th, 1239th, 1240th, 1241th, 1242th, 1243th, 1244th, 1245th, 1246th, 1247th, 1248th, 1249th, 1250th, 1252th, 1253th, 1254th, 1255th, 1256th, 1257th, 1258th, 1259th, 1260th, 1261th, 1262th, 1268th, 1269th, 1270th, 1271th, 1272th, 1273th, 1274th, 1275th, 1276th, 1277th, 1278th, 1280th, 1281th, 1282th, 1283th, 1284th, 1285th, 1286th, 1287th, 1288th, 1289th, 1290th, 1295th, 1296th, 1297th, 1298th, 1299th, 1300th, 1301th, 1302th, 1303th, 1304th, 1305th, 1310th, 1311th, 1312th, 1313th, 1314th, 1315th, 1316th, 1317th, 1318th, 1319th, 1320th, 1325th, 1326th, 1327th, 1328th, 1329th, 1330th, 1331th, 1332th, 1333th, 1334th, 1335th, 1339th, 1340th, 1341th, 1342th, 1343th, 1344th, 1345th, 1346th, 1347th, 1348th, 1349th, 1350th, 1351th, 1352th, 1353th, 1354th, 1355th, 1356th, 1357th, 1358th, 1359th, 1360th, 1362th, 1363th, 1364th, 1365th, 1366th, 1367th, 1368th, 1369th, 1370th, 1371th, 1372th, 1378th, 1379th, 1380th, 1381th, 1382th, 1383th, 1384th, 1385th, 1386th, 1387th, 1388th, 1390th, 1391th, 1392th, 1393th, 1394th, 1395th, 1396th, 1397th, 1398th, 1399th, 1400th, 1403rd, 1404th, 1405th, 1406th, 1407th, 1408th, 1409th, 1410th, 1411th, 1412th, 1413th, 1418th, 1419th, 1420th, 1421th, 1422th, 1423th, 1424th, 1425th, 1426th, 1427th, 1428th, 1430th, 1431th, 1432th, 1433th, 1434th, 1435th, 1436th, 1437th, 1438th, 1439th, 1440th, 1444th, 1445th, 1446th, 1447th, 1448th, 1449th, 1450th, 1451th, 1452th, 1453th, 1454th, 1460th, 1461th, 1462th, 1463th, 1464th, 1465th, 1466th, 1467th, 1468th, 1469th, 1470th, 1478th, 1479th, 1480th, 1481th, 1482th, 1483th, 1484th, 1485th, 1486th, 1487th, 1488th, 1490th, 1491th, 1492th, 1493th, 1494th, 1495th, 1496th, 1497th, 1498th, 1499th, 1500th, 1504th, 1505th, 1506th, 1507th, 1508th, 1509th, 1510th, 1511th, 1512th, 1513th, 1514th, 1519th, 1520th, 1521th, 1522th, 1523th, 1524th, 1525th, 1526th, 1527th, 1528th, 1529th, 1530th, 1531th, 1532th, 1533th, 1534th, 1535th, 1536th, 1537th, 1538th, 1539th, 1540th, 1545th, 1546th, 1547th, 1548th, 1549th, 1550th, 1551th, 1552th, 1553th, 1554th, 1555th, 1558th, 1559th, 1560th, 1561th, 1562th, 1563th, 1564th, 1565th, 1566th, 1567th, 1568th, 1570th, 1571th, 1572th, 1573th, 1574th, 1575th, 1576th, 1577th, 1578th, 1579th, 1580th, 1585th, 1586th, 1587th, 1588th, 1589th, 1590th, 1591th, 1592th, 1593th, 1594th, 1595th, 1598th, 1599th, 1600th, 1601th, 1602th, 1603th, 1604th, 1605th, 1606th, 1607th, 1608th, 1610th, 1611th, 1612th, 1613th, 1614th, 1615th, 1616th, 1617th, 1618th, 1619th, 1620th, 1625th, 1626th, 1627th, 1628th, 1629th, 1630th, 1631th, 1632th, 1633th, 1634th, 1635th, 1640th, 1641th, 1642th, 1643th, 1644th, 1645th, 1646th, 1647th, 1648th, 1649th, 1650th, 1654th, 1655th, 1656th, 1657th, 1658th, 1659th, 1660th, 1661th, 1662th, 1663th, 1664th, 1670th, 1671th, 1672th, 1673th, 1674th, 1675th, 1676th, 1677th, 1678th, 1679th, 1680th, 1684th, 1685th, 1686th, 1687th, 1688th, 1689th, 1690th, 1691th, 1692th, 1693th, 1694th, 1699th, 1700th, 1701th, 1702th, 1703th, 1704th, 1705th, 1706th, 1707th, 1708th, 1709th, 1710th, 1711th, 1712th, 1713th, 1714th, 1715th, 1716th, 1717th, 1718th, 1719th, 1720th, 1725th, 1726th, 1727th, 1728th, 1729th, 1730th, 1731th, 1732th, 1733th, 1734th, 1735th, 1740th, 1741th, 1742th, 1743th, 1744th, 1745th, 1746th, 1747th, 1748th, 1749th, 1750th, 1755th, 1756th, 1757th, 1758th, 1759th, 1760th, 1761th, 1762th, 1763th, 1764th, 1765th, 1770th, 1771th, 1772th, 1773th, 1774th, 1775th, 1776th, 1777th, 1778th, 1779th, 1780th, 1785th, 1786th, 1787th, 1788th, 1789th, 1790th, 1791th, 1792th, 1793th, 1794th, 1795th,
First item under all business, noise ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Personnel Committee did meet and reviewed the ordinance with Commonwealth Attorney, Mr. Jones, and let any of them speak that would like, but basically, there is a recommendation to advertise a public hearing for the proposed noise ordinance.
Okay. State recommended February 12, 2019, at 7:05 PM, for a public hearing on the noise ordinance. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion second. Any other discussion or questions?
What was Mr. Jones's, did he offer anything, or did we change anything based on discussion with him?
As long discussion about something we already knew, it's pretty hard to defend ordinance like this, and since we chose in the past not to base it on a scientific decimal level, and there's some very slight, I think, tweaks to the ordinance that you've had before. You agree with that, Stephen? But it's enough that the county attorney thinks we need a hearing. But it's still going to be a judgment call on what is a nuisance. He did like the part that you have to notify and identify the complaintant, which is good.
Ideally, a decimal type ordinance would be best.
I understand what Mr. Hill's saying, and I agree. In a perfect world, I'd rather have decimal meters. But, you know, my biggest complaint with it, of course, is what Mr. Hill just said, anonymous calls using county arrest, a neighbor you don't like, and some of the time issues as far as target shooting. But we'll put it out there, and if it passes, we'll wait to go to court, and I guess roll the dogs.
Okay. Any more questions? On setting the public hearing, have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is set. Next item is Shenandoah Cave franchise renewal. Mr. Bayer, you want to summarize our meeting with Jim Hill?
Yes, Mr. Kyle from Shenandoah Cave came and met with us last week. I feel a very productive meeting. They talked about the current state of their service area. They are looking at an expansion area, they are looking at possibility of applying for a grant, whether it's Tobacco Commission or the VAT funds for expansion of services. So the committee met, and in general recommends approval of renewal of the resolution for their franchise.
Okay. It did come out of committee with a recommendation to renew the franchise. It doesn't need a second. Anybody else have any comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, it did come out of committee, but since this is a resolution, I would recommend that we go ahead and do a motion in a second, if that's acceptable.
Have a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion second. Any other questions, comments?
I think for clarification, what we've achieved here by a little bit of delay is that a franchisee had brought to their attention by the county, and we are going to have an extensive expansion of their service to the citizens. And I'd highly recommend we do this, or whatever board does this, every time one of these franchises come up, push back and ask for a little bit more service.
Okay. Any other comments? Hear none, or do a roll call vote this morning?
Aye.
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 The chair, but, anything else under all business?
I do not have any other old business, Chairman.
On the board, Ms. Lynn, your favorite type of year?
Well, good morning to everyone. We're going wide open in my world, so we'll update you on what's going on, at least through November. The financial report that you received in your board packet for the month of November included in the consolidated account, an account balance of $63,64,530. And of that, the balance in the general fund is $35,308,457. We did have an increase, if you compared your October report to your November, primarily, which I will contribute to the beginning of the tax collections, because we got that started. Our tax collections are going pretty good. We were busy yesterday, we were open yesterday, and we were pretty steady all day long. Mr. Bayer was even out and about and came by to see what was happening in the neighborhood. But so far this morning, we've been very busy. But through November, I didn't run the numbers because of being out of the office and just our busyness, but I'm going to estimate we're probably at about 25% collections. But we still have a lot of mail to get through. We are working on mail that was postmarked the end of November. We have to work that piece by piece. It's not automated as everyone seems to feel that it is. So waiting, or processing a piece of mail is the same as waiting on any one person coming in the office. You have to work that situation, take that person, take their payments, and work them. So we're very much behind on mail, so if you, I'm sure you all are hearing complaints and receiving those on a pretty frequent basis about that. I hope, of course, with being out, well, let's back up, with the due date being tomorrow, I feel like we're going to be very busy. Then being out Monday and Tuesday for the New Year's holiday, I'm expecting at least two weeks into January. My goal is by the time we leave for the holiday weekend in mid-January, that we have all mail worked. We have not been able to get through a lot of the escrows, which come in early December, so when we get those in, a lot of our money's going to increase as far as revenue. But we're working as hard as we possibly can, it just takes time. It just takes time. So, but I guess financially, that's kind of all that I have. Does anyone have any questions or anything that maybe has come up that you're concerned about, or something that I did not address that I need to, and it slipped my mind?
Lori Ford?
Is there anything we can do as a board to help you with the mail process? And I mean, is it worth bringing somebody in part-time for a month?
Well, I have two part-time people now. They're actually filling two full-time positions, because I technically have two full-time positions open. But I have part-time people in those, so I'm working them as much as I can possibly work them and stay under the 28-hour timeframe. One thing, and this kind of goes along with the audit report, which I was going to address here in a moment, as you noticed, and our office always gets written up for lack of segregation of duties, there's five in the office, including me. You can't separate who collects and who does the daily deposit, who does the posting to the GL, who does the bank reg. We're not staffed for that. We have four computers that we can process payments through that have printers connected to them. So unless we use our workstations, we have no other way to process payments. So right now, there's three of us that are at the front counter. I have one that, she's my bookkeeper, she's doing the deposits in the mornings, so when she gets finished, she's coming out, she's going in on what we call the mail station, which is our low station there, because it's kind of in a weird spot for accessibility to folks coming in. So she starts taking phone payments and processing the mail as much as she can at that point. She primarily handles phone for us. But with phone payments coming in, and then folks in the line, there's days that honestly, I don't know if we got five pieces of mail worked, but there was probably 500-plus that came in the door. You know, and people are calling because their checks haven't cleared, they've put stop payments on them, they're concerned we haven't gotten them. We don't know what's there, because when there's 10,000 pieces of mail back there, but there's 100 people in line at the door. You can't get through the mail. You can't. I mean, we're working it as much as we can. But there was literally days, the mail guy, they have those, I call them buckets, but they're tubs that are about that tall and maybe that long and that wide. He would bring one in full, that was full of payments. I don't know what we can do to make it more automated. I know some offices, they have machines that they've acquired through their bank that they're able to automate. They put a barcode, kind of like your checks, and your checks have your routing numbers and all that at the bottom. They code their bills with that, and they're able to be more automated with that, but then they also have the mail machines that open the mail and kind of do the sorting and things like that, which a lot of that stuff we don't have. I'm hoping if we can get through this tax season, kind of look into maybe seeing if we can do something to make that process a little bit easier. But right now, it is kind of a painful process. But, you know, we're going back, and we receive your payment in the mail, and we're making sure that you don't have back your taxes, or you're not tied to someone else that owes back your taxes. So I think twofold, with us trying to, what I keep labeling, clean up the prior year taxes and get a lot of those delinquencies cleared out of the system. Once we can get past some of that, I think it would be a little bit better, smooth sailing. Because, and I'll use like Ms. Lawson as an example, she sends her payment in, and we look her up under Lawson. She, let's say she's just gotten married in the last two years, she may have a tax bill that's three years old that's listed under her maiden name. So we're looking for her under name, but we're also looking her up under social security number. And guys, don't feel like we leave you all out on that, because we do the same thing with you all, too, because some things come up differently. There are some accounts, especially with mobile homes, we've noticed, that has the T-numbers, or I call them the T-numbers that were assigned through DMV, those numbers come up. So when we look you up, if you own a mobile home, it may come up under a T-number. So we're only going to find that when we search your name. If we strictly only search your social, we're not going to find that. And it's how some of that information is importing in. So a lot of it is just working, I think, with Mr. Southers and trying to, you know, as we're getting more into this and learning more about the system, trying to figure out how we can clean some of those things up to make it easier in the end. Because it's sort of a struggle. I mean, the system is, it has its faults, I'm not going to say it's perfect, but we're able to locate things that we had never been able to have found in that old system. We can track payments. If you come in and pay, we can put your name in as who paid, instead of going back and guessing and saying, you know, Mr. McRoberts comes in, and Mr. Hornies come in and graciously paid his taxes, and he says, why didn't pay him? Who paid that? Well, we can look at it now and say, well, Mr. Horny paid your taxes for you. We didn't have that before. We can search payments, you pay by check, we can search by your check number. You know, we can see exactly what all was included in that payment. And those are of great benefits, but at the same time, you kind of have the other side of, there are things you have to struggle through to reap the rewards of those benefits. But it, to go back to your initial question, probably unless you can give me four more employees, more office space and more computers, I'm not sure what else we can do at this point.
Your question, my friend, why do we have two part-times and two full-time positions?
I have two full-time people. I had one full-time person that cut back to part-time, and then I had a full-time person that I had to release. So because of that, we were right at tax season. So I called someone that I knew I felt like could come in and do the job and could learn the job. So she's been gracious enough to accept it. She comes back every day, comes back from lunch every day, so I'm grateful for that. I've got both of them in those positions, because honestly, Ms. Lawson, we don't have the time to be able to shut down and conduct interviews, because it really takes about an afternoon to do that. And I had hoped, based on the December 5th due date, we could do all that in January. I've probably got it pushed to February right now, to try to get those full-time positions filled. But with, only four of us can be on the computer at all times anyway, as far as accepting payments. So even with a fifth person there, they're unable to process payments, because we only have four stations.
So we need another station?
If you will remodel my office, I would gladly take five stations and more personnel. I don't know where we would put a fifth station, because...
I mean, temporarily, we could put them over there where the...
We could put them at a workstation.
Assessment office, sitting there empty.
Idealistically, what I spoke to Mr. Southers about, I need computer upgrades, but because my animal license program, or dog tags, as we call it, and the state taxes are not on Tyler yet, I can't upgrade all of my computers, because new computers will not support the old system that both of those programs are still on. So I've kind of aggravated Mr. Bayer a little bit, and sort of handed everybody to see if we can get that process going, that we can update the computers, because what I want to do is move a computer to, we have a back room, that years ago served as an office for Misery Pass and some others before everything was brought out front to where it is now. I want to move a computer back there, get a printer for back there. I could tuck somebody away in a back office and have them to work mail. You know, that's strictly all that they would be doing. They wouldn't have to deal with the phones, wouldn't have to deal with customers coming in, that maybe we could get through that process a little bit more. But we really haven't gotten to that point to get the new, get a new computer, because I have one that does definitely need to be replaced. It can be replaced at any time, to get that shifted back there, order a printer, and get set up on that. So it's kind of, other things have occurred that have delayed us a little bit, but we're making it.
And that happens. I just don't want you to go through this every year.
Yeah. I don't want to go through it every year. So with this being our second year, and now we're kind of like, oh, okay, now we know what we need to do with this. Okay, no, this needs to be fixed. How can we address this to make this better? Because last year, we didn't have a clue. We really did not have a clue, because we were just really trying to survive. So this year, we're still trying to survive, but we know more of what we need to do to survive. So, you know, a lot of it, I think if we can kind of move some things forward a little bit now that we have a better understanding, because really, we're only, well, tax bills went out mid-November last year, so we're only 13 months into what I'll call taxes, and we're in our second tax season in that 13 months of trying to figure out what we need to do. So, but if I can, we can move some stuff around, because I don't want to spend the money to buy a new computer to put back there when I can replace one, but we kind of need some other things to progress in order to...
In long range, citizen self-service helps. There will still be back work that they've got to do, certifying and looking at everything. But citizen self-service is where we get into taking the electronic check payments, ACH payments, things like that. And that's on the horizon. Those things are, been worked on.
Hopefully. I was told that would be live last tax season, it wasn't. I was told this season, and said, no, we'd wait on water. So water's now April, I'm not sure what the status of that's going to be going live. But that would help, because, you know, we have a lot of folks who make the, that pay It's amazing, to me, in a roundabout way, one of my, one of the ladies that was there in the office before, she kept saying, Lori, they're not going to pay that fee. People are not going to pay that, they don't want to pay that fee. Us, as the public in general, we don't mind us sitting in our pajamas at midnight and pay our tax bill, and it charges a $5, $10 fee, because it's just how we are. It's just what we've become, or, you know, pay through our phone. But we get a lot of online tax payments, you know, we're still having to follow up, because a lot of times folks owe other bills, or we have a hold on them at DMV or something like that. But, you know, we're making a lot of progress, not as quickly as what I had hoped we would, but we're making progress.
Let me ask you a question, but Lori, you just said, is there a $5, $10 online fee for paying online?
The provider that I use, you can pay by e-check. And if you pay by e-check, which is just using, you know, one of your regular checks from your checkbook, it's a flat $3 fee. If you pay by debit or credit card, which you can also pay by Discover and American Express, which we do not accept in the office, it's a 2.75% fee. So whatever your bill is, you pay 2.75% fee on top of that, and that goes to the provider. And then they send us the money, whatever the amount was paid for the tax bill.
Well, that's just unlike DMV charges you for coming to see them.
Right.
They charge you more if you make face contact than if you use electronics.
And for us, you know, we are very fortunate that our bank does not charge us for credit card processing. So we accept Visa and MasterCard in the office. There's no fee to use that. So folks really love that ability, because, let's face it, we all have those credit cards that have the rewards on it. We like those reward points, whether it's Cabela's, or it's Marriott, or it's Disney, or American Airlines, you know, we like that stuff. So, we have that, but then, the phone payments are very difficult, but, because the phones are constantly ringing off the hook, then they're calling county administration office, because they can't get through to us, they're calling the commissioner's office. You can only answer so many phone calls at a time. And we're generally answering right now, we're putting people on hold, and we're getting right back to them as quickly as we can. Sometimes it's a minute or two, it may be five minutes. But, phone payments really inundate us a lot, but, you know, those are payments, too. So, you can't cut out taking phone payments. A lot of offices will not take payments over the phone. You have to go through the third-party provider that I was just referring to, to make payments, but...
Can y'all debit direct to an account?
Not at this time.
But, will that be available?
That is supposed to be part of the citizen self-serve program that Mr. Bayer was just referring to. Whenever that is up and going, we're supposed to be able to do that through that program.
You mentioned the credits from the bank. Is there any way that, I know you're busy right now, but just a blue sky, what is that really worth in dollars?
As far as having the new fees...
Does the bank not charge and use the bank fee?
For us, it really doesn't affect us that much. It affects our taxpayers, because it would be the same thing as using that third-party provider to pay with a debit or credit card. Because, if they come in and they're paying a $100 tax bill, and we tell them that they've gotta pay a 3% fee to use their Visa or MasterCard, that's another $3 on top of that. So, really, it's more for our taxpayers, it's more of a benefit and a luxury for them.
You might anticipate this loaded question. So, when are you gonna put it out to bids again?
Our bank contract will have to go out this year. I think I have one more year, I can do an extension, but I wanna get it out this year. I've been trying to work on that for the past probably nine months, just because I knew what timeframe we would be in right now. But I need to rebid that, and see what we can, what we can maybe get from other localities, see what they have to offer.
Thank you. Any more questions?
Okay, thank you. Come on down and visit us, we'll be glad to have any of you.
I got a Christmas present for you up the truck, I'll be seeing you soon.
Well, come on down, we'll be waiting for you. Ladies and gentlemen...
I will mention one thing that has worked out well, and it all works out with this continued implementation of the Tyler Muniz system. The system was scheduled for a upgrade, I was not aware of this, on December 28th, tomorrow.
We were due for an upgrade tomorrow.
Had I known that when we talked about extending the taxes, I would've said December 27th, because we couldn't have there. Since it's on December 28th, we have postponed that, because we don't wanna be doing an upgrade when she's on her last day of taking taxes. We're afraid that might knock us out three months or six months with our Tyler Muniz upgrade. Fortunately, I think it's eight days out, January 7th or 8th.
January the 8th. It's sometime after the new year, so I'm not sure how far through mail will be, because in, you know, with any upgrade, you always have those behind-the-scenes bugs that can affect you. 'Cause our screens, what I've seen, our screens are not going to change, that's really going to affect us on day-to-day, as far as processing, continuing to process mail payments. But, hopefully, we won't be as busy then, that if we have issues, you know, Mr. Southers can get us resolved pretty quickly, as he labels it, the behind-the-scenes bugs, 'cause that's exactly what they are.
So, the advantage of that is, the upgrade is needed. It's like your computer systems and phone systems and everything else, you've got to do the upgrades, but then that, by being January 8th, that still keeps our water billing on track to be done, as Ms. Gwen spoke of. So, we think the timing will work out on everything there.
It's all coming together, it just takes time. And willingness to live through it. Thank you. You all have a good New Year, hope everybody had a good Christmas, but Mr. Vaughn will see you shortly.
Yeah.
And I'll see Ms. Tucker here. Sheriff.
Sheriff's report is in there, debris collection report, just for information.
Okay, the Water Committee met on December 18th, 2018, and makes the following recommendations. First is to temporarily suspend the Raper Ridge tank project for up to 90 days. Okay, come from committee, doesn't need a second. Mr. Berg, you wanna give an information for this?
Yeah, basically, they're pretty close to finishing this entire project. The tank and everything is up, but it's just not weather or anything for them to do any work on the outside, the final grading work and all of that. This just temporarily suspends the contract for 90 days. If the weather improves prior to that time, they'll come back and start the work before then. No cost to it, just extends it out.
Anybody have any questions? I'll head to here, then we'll go along, call over to Mr. Vaughn.
Uh, uh.
Uh.
Sheriff. Next item.
Second is to amend and appropriate $159,000 and award the Max Meadows Bridge project to Central Builders.
Okay, you didn't come from the committee, doesn't need a second. Any questions?
How much money?
$159,000.
Is that for rehanging or bore?
That's still rehanging.
Rehanging.
Two bids came in, one at $141,000 and the other at $200 and some thousand dollars on the project. This is a low bid from Central Builders.
Well, I haven't seen a design, but I'd certainly consider rejecting the bids and put it out again. Mr. Vaughn?
We were at $108, but we were less than about 100 on the engineer estimate.
Yeah, $108 or so on the engineer's estimate.
So, it's how much over the engineer's estimate?
51,000.
Yeah. The situation is, obviously, with the Health Department has said we need to have another source of water there.
I realize that.
That was a discussion. We are not pleased with the bids. The bids are much higher than the engineer's estimates were on this to do it. We can accept it and replace that water line and have a backup source for Max Meadows, or as you said, we could reject it and look at rebidding it at a later time.
What, have you tried negotiating with the low bidder?
Yes. Mr. Crisp and Cardinal did negotiations with the low bidder to look at any opportunities for cost savings that could go with it, and not able to identify any changes.
There's not a lot of flexibility in hanging a pipe.
No, there's not.
But...
You also talked with another contractor, you said that you valued the line.
Yeah. It was reviewed and discussed.
What was the engineer's estimate on the bore, and why did we abandon the bore?
The boring estimate was somewhere up in $150,000, is that right, Mr. Vaughn? Somewhere up in that range. And it took even more time to go through all the permitting process on it. And I don't know that $150 on it means our bid, our estimate was low, and it could be $200,000 on the boring process.
Well, it might've attracted more contractors, that different function of hanging and boring.
And we did do a lot of recruitment of contractors on this, and sent out to a lot of contractors.
$50,000 is a lot of money.
That's a short bid, too.
Do we have time to put this out to rebid? Is that with the Health Department?
We could go back and meet with Cardinal and them, and talk about the timeframe, and talk to the Health Department and see. If you all would like for the Water Committee to do that, we could do that, and then bring this back at the next January 8th meeting or whatever, just see what the Health Department's comments would be.
Stephen, if the low bid come in at $144,500, why are we...
We're allowing a 10% contingency on top of it, is what we're looking at putting in there. And that's because this is assuming that the existing hangers are okay to hang things, but as they get in there, they may have to do some work on some of the existing hangers. They looked at that in their bid, but that's just a contingency on top of it. We would not spend any more than what we have to.
With this design, do you anticipate any problems with VDOT? You already have all those permits in place.
Yeah, everything's been reviewed with VDOT on this, yes.
As I understood the complaint before, it's a concrete problem, and anchors are pulling out, is that right, Mr. Vaughn?
Yeah, and steel failure has been rusted through. The steel is failing, it's rusted through also.
Our hangers or BDOT structure?
Our hangers.
Our hangers.
Okay, please tell me we're not going back with the same design?
No, we should not be.
Huh?
We should not be back.
That was a question, are we going back with same hanger design, or are we trying to fix the problem? That line's been there how long?
We're replacing the actual hangers, rather than the line.
The hangers on the bridge are hanging off the line, the supports that hang down from the hangers, have what's broken away in the process. The saddles that hold everything, and that's, all that has been replaced in this process.
That's my question, are we going back with the same hanger design that's failed already?
I do not know the answer to that. I know what they're designing.
How old that line, how long has it worked?
I do not know.
Rodney, you know how long, well, how old's the bridge? I guess that's when you put the water line on, it wasn't?
I would assume it was on there before, but I don't know when it was, I don't know when the water line was installed. Eighties would be my guess for most of that work in there, yeah.
It's an eighties problem.
Any other questions? We do have a recommendation from the Water Committee, it doesn't need a second, unless the Water Committee wants to change the recommendation.
I understand Mr. Hale's concern. We don't, we didn't like the bids, we went back and tried to renegotiate on this, to see if there were any opportunities to cost save. The reason why I think the committee looked at recommending was, as Ms. Crisp said, is just to move forward. We've notified the Health Department, we're down to one source. They're fine with us having one source, but they wanted to know that we were working towards a resolution.
When we did the pre-bid meeting, we had one contractor show up, he was the high bid here, it probably meant that he was the only one to come up with it.
His psychology hasn't worked very well, did it?
And if he would've been the only bid, we would've rejected all bids, in that situation, because that would've been the assumption. But with the one coming in $50,000, $60,000 below it, was much better than his bid, but it's still above where we are. And folks, our water funds, you know, I mentioned before, we're continuing to struggle on our water funds. It is a matter of timing, and we can certainly delay this for a meeting, and talk to the Health Department, and talk to the contractor again, and just see if they think a more favorable bid environment would exist in February or March of this year.
I would prefer that.
I agree.
I'd recommend...
I don't have a problem with delaying it, but I mean, it just seemed like it was put out there to the Water Committee that it was a necessity that needs to be done right now. And I mean...
It does.
Yeah, we don't need it if it don't blow out.
Right.
The water line secured on the bridge, the well at Max Meadows, the concern is, if it goes out, then we don't have no other water source.
Right. Well, I mean, this, we can open this back up right now, we've got it closed off, the way I understand it, there's no water flowing through it. If we have to, we can open it back up, but when we open it back up, it may last a day, it may last a year, it may not last 30 seconds.
So, is this an urgent matter? I don't want anyone to go without water.
It should be.
It is an urgent matter, we're down to one well source.
It's a $50,000 gamble, is what it is, and I think the contractors know that, and that's...
I don't have a problem, as part of the Water Committee, I don't have a problem with going back and rebidding it, if that's what y'all wanted to, and we get it rebid within a month.
I would take the recommendation to just table this until the next meeting, and let us go back and talk to the engineer and the bid environment, and see what options they think would happen if we came back within a month or two, what the bid... The main thing was, that most of the contractors indicated they were, we thought this would be, you know, a relatively short, simple job, that may fit in well into someone's schedule. And apparently, the contractors are doing so much work in some other areas, this did not, did not come into their schedule.
When did you put the bids out, or what was the close...
I don't remember, Mr. Vaughn. They opened December 12th. They went out, at least, early November's when they went out.
End of October, early November.
And this went to all the Dodge, Dominion, Plam Room, stuff like that, I mean, it went beyond our...
How many bidders did you have? So, the companies that normally do our water work didn't bid it? I mean, Philman Pace and people like that, this is what they do, they didn't bid the work?
Right. If you remember, Central Builders is the ones that did one and two on Speedwell 30, or two, excuse me, and they also did our Castle Monroe project.
Yes, I mean, these are guys that have been doing our projects, Central Builders, that's a low bidder.
And Keane, of course, the other bidder, he's working the project for us now. So, we did have, quote, people we've done business with before.
Well, I have this project, we'll take a listen till our next meeting, and see what you can come up with. Okay, next item.
All right, third and final thing is accept a term agreement with AMR Diversified Integration and Lord &amp; Company for design, engineering, and installation of a SCADA system.
Okay, come from committee, doesn't need a second. Mr. Berg, you want to...
Yeah, basically, we put out proposals, and these all, companies all respond, and we recommended this, and to an agreement with each of them, and as projects come up, we can work with them to do certain projects on the SCADA system, and then the engineers got a recommendation also on programming-type assistance, we could work with them on doing that. So, it gives us the ability, if y'all remember, earlier in the year, we had looked at bidding out in the SCADA system, but the cost was way too high for what we had. This gives us the ability to work on certain projects under certain amounts, and work on them as time and money allows.
It's a modified service contract?
Yes.
Anybody else have any other questions? Here none, we'll go along, call over to Mr. Horns.
Uh.
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 Sheriff, anything else from Water Committee?
Put a question in.
Yes, Mr. Hale.
What's the status of the emergency generators for the pump station?
We had quite a bit of conversation with the state on that during the process, during one of the outages that we had. Still awaiting the official awarding of it from the state. We have done some looking at generators, and trying to price out what some of the generators would be, if we had to get a portable one, either leasing or having it under a temporary basis. But I will, I'll ask Curtis and to follow up with Blake and him again, and just see what the status is of getting that in place. We have understood that it's, it is set to be awarded, but the timing from the state determines when you get the notification.
Do we have something specified and ready to place an order?
We would have to bid it out, but we have specs of exactly what it is, yes.
And have we ever consulted or looked at military surplus?
It has been looked at, yes.
And they're just not available?
Haven't gotten anything that's met exactly what we needed in the process. And we don't wanna purchase one if we're gonna be getting this other one real soon. I mean, it can be purchased, and then turned around and surplus back as soon as we get the other. But, you know, it, we, during the power outages, when all of our pump stations and everything were out, we still have the ability to serve all of our areas, even without that generator in place.
For how long?
Well, we did it for the entire time. It was out last February, March, whenever we went to that training or whatever up there, and came back, and y'all came in through the snowstorm. All of our pump stations and everything were without power. Our generators that we had on the other facility, on the other... Our generators that we had on the other facility, on the other pump stations where we pumped, the only thing that didn't have water were a couple, like residences where they've got their own small little, shoot, I can't think of the terminology, but little pumps, you know, for elevation purposes there.
But if we get this great, it'll be a permanent...
It'll be a permanent generator.
At that main station.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
It's relevant to this thing because for us to maintain fire pressure at the Expo Center and at these high points of elevation, we've got to have that pump station be able to maintain that pressure on the main line. I'm not sure that the tanks can do that if the power was off. Thank you.
Okay, Budget Committee report.
Budget Committee met and recommends the following. First item is approving a carryover of unspent funds to the Department of Social Services and amending and appropriating eighty thousand dollars to fifty-three oh one dash forty-five, four five zero one zero zero.
Again, come from the committee, doesn't need a second. Any questions? Here none with a roll call vote this morning?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Yeah?
Aye.
The Chair votes, uh, next item?
Is providing two thousand dollars to With County Junior Appalachian Music Program and to amend and appropriate two thousand dollars to eleven oh one, four five seven zero one five.
Again, come from the committee, doesn't need a second. Any questions? Here none with a roll call vote this morning?
Aye.
Yeah?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
The Chair votes, uh, next item?
Next item is authorizing payment to Eric Crouchy for four sheep and two ewes killed and amending and appropriating twelve hundred dollars to thirty-five oh one, four fifty-seven, five oh one.
Again, come from the committee, doesn't need a second. Any questions? Here none with a roll call vote this morning?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
The Chair votes, uh, next item?
Is authorizing payment as recommended by the Fire Rescue Committee to the Fire Department's air packs as follows. Next matters Fire Department, one oh two, two oh five ninety-five. Ivanhoe Fire Department, ninety-nine thousand, three thirty-seven, ninety-five. And Barron Springs Fire Department for seventy-three thousand, five hundred sixty-one and eighty, for a total of two hundred seventy-five thousand, one hundred and five dollars and seventy cents.
Okay, come from the committee, doesn't need a second. Any questions? Here none with a roll call vote this morning?
Aye.
Yeah?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The, uh, I will mention on that, the, as indicated on note, the three squad, Fire Department should be getting in a total of sixty-eight thousand dollars in rural development funding, twenty-five thousand for Max Meadows, twenty-five thousand for Ivanhoe, and eighteen or eighteen-five for Max Meadows. And when those funds come in, they will remit those back to the county to reimburse us for this payment on the air packs. So I appreciate the work that all those departments did in getting ninety thousand dollars worth of Withland Foundation grants and sixty-eight thousand dollars worth of rural development grants to help cover this cost. That helps tremendously.
Okay, next item?
And next item is authorizing purchase of fire trucks through Houston-Gaveston Area Council's Cooperative Purchasing Agreement as follows. Max Meadows Fire Department is four hundred and six thousand, five hundred twenty-one, and Barron Springs Fire Department is five hundred seventy-five thousand, five hundred sixty-six dollars, for a total of nine hundred eighty-two thousand, eighty-seven dollars.
Okay, come from the committee, doesn't need a second. Any questions or discussion?
Do these trucks meet what they need? Not what they want, what they need?
I, I will say, everyone has worked really hard on this for months. Mr. Haywood, Josh, Stephen did a really good job drilling down to what is needed and not what is and won't. And I do feel good about these, these dollar amounts.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I agree with what I answered. It's what they need.
A lot of work's been put into it.
The committee's met at least four times in, in working this down from, I think initial request was one point four million. And I might be wrong on that, but it's close. So I think we've done the best we can, equipment sold. Are you going to go forward and discuss the payment request, or is this a one-time vote?
I think it's, we can do discussion of both. Well, first of all, what I'll state is with the budget-wise, the money you, you put back for fire trucks and the money you put back for fire equipment, taking away what they got for the grants, provides us with enough ability, enough funding in the current budget to, to pay for these trucks. So that does help out. This is, uh, the purchase price for both of these trucks is nine hundred and eighty-two thousand. As I mentioned with Mr. Stone earlier, one of the options that both of these trucking companies do provide is the opportunity for a prepayment of a partial amount or a full amount upfront with establishing a performance payment bond to go with it in the process. My recommendation at this point would be authorize the approval of the purchase of the trucks and the, for the Chair and the County Administrator to sign the contract documents for the purchase of the trucks. Allow us to work with Mr. Fitzgerald and Mr. Smith on the prepaid options, the terms, making certain what it takes to get the truck, the chassis titled in our name. And we'll come back at the January eighth meeting or the January day meeting with a request for an authorization for a prepay of those trucks. We don't have all those details and things lined up with them yet, but they both said they'll be glad to take your money now, they'll be glad to take it anytime in the future or prepay. Worst-case scenario, you don't prepay and you don't pay for it until they come in next November, December. And that's, that's the amount that you'll be paying right there. The prepay does allow them to provide you interest and payments back. Yours decreases by about thirteen thousand dollars, I believe, that will be issued back as a refund check. And that all depends on whether it takes them three hundred and thirty days or if it takes them two hundred and seventy days, it's smaller. If it takes them four hundred days, it's more. Josh's is a four point five percent, I believe, interest rate on it. We'll get all those details and the paperwork on all that and then let you all have all of that, how they would handle the chassis and all that, to make a decision if you want to prepay those vehicles.
Well, I, I think with the money we save, we need to prepay. I understand what Mr. Stone's saying, but I know for a fact Rodney might, how long has Pierce been in business? And even the Barron Springs strip, Spartan's been in business. All the business deals the county has, I have no problem with these two companies prepaying it. And any worries that we're not going to get a profit.
And I think they probably have something that they do that when people prepay anyway, I'm sure we're not the first that will prepay or private.
No, it's real simple business. They, they can buy surety in negotiations with them. If they will provide for their own bond like we would require from anyone else and still get this kind of interest, it's just good business. But the surety, I believe at Pierce is good, and I believe at Spark is good, but with public money, I think we have to have a third-party surety for that kind of money.
And you pay for that surety, it's like twenty-four, twenty-five hundred dollars on it, but it's part of the...
If they want to deal, that's just another little tightening of the noose.
I don't think there'd be any problem at all with Max Meadows' truck because they're using a commercial Kenworth chassis. I'm not sure on Spark, and with it being a custom cab truck, they'd probably slap that VIN number on at the end. But like Mr. Reeve said, I'm sure they've been through this before, so...
Okay, Mr. Fitzgerald, you want to amend your motion to authorize County Administrator to determine to sign pertinent documents? And was anything else?
Let's hear it right now. Yes.
Do they have a second on the amended motion?
Second.
Have a motion amended, I'll have a second. Any other questions? Here none with a roll call vote this morning?
Aye.
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 The Chair votes, uh, anything else?
That's all.
Few informational items. First, Mr. Hale gave me a copy of this, Regional Impact, the New River Regional Workforce Development Board Job Placement and Career Training Services. I believe he went to a meeting of theirs in the last couple of weeks, if I remember correctly.
Right.
And just put this in here for informational purposes. If Mr. Hale or any of y'all would like someone from the Workforce Development Board to come and make a presentation at an upcoming meeting, we can certainly schedule them to do so. We just wanted to include it to let you know about their work and their services. Next item is informational purposes also on the Gypsy Moth trapping survey. If you all are interested in a proposal presentation, we can work with the VDOT's office to have a representative come and make a presentation on their continued treatment of the Gypsy moth.
And they have got this far south?
Yes.
And I've seen the map of the counties, do we need, I mean, as far as if they got participating, anybody participating with County in this?
I do not know if anyone is or not. I'd be welcome to have them come in and make a presentation and see if it's something they welcome in to us to try to do some encouragement of, of doing that.
I think we should.
Well, our private land, our private woodland is so small. If, if we do something like this, or spraying, or retarding, there's freedom. The, the big problem is public land, and there's virtually no money for the Forest Service right now. Mr. Berry, you know, maybe close to what public land is in With County, but it's a huge amount of public land, and they need to be a joint effort. That the Forest Service needs to do their part along with, with private land.
Well, I think that's having them kind of popping to us. Maybe they can tell us where the Forest Service is participating in this.
I will get them to schedule. The map on page two eighty of your package shows some of the treatment area in the National Forest down between Spiegel and the Cripple Creek area. But we'll be glad to have them come and talk to us. Next item is the Valley to Valley Trail Initiative. Ms. Lawson and myself went to sort of a kickoff meeting that they had in Christiansburg with their entire goal of trying to connect from Roanoke-Salem Greenway over to the Christiansburg area, over through Pulaski to the New River Trail, down to Fries and Galaks. And then they discussed also connecting the Iron Mountain Trail as a possibility between there and the Creeper Trail and having a trail all the way to Abington. The good news for, for With County is that the trail is pretty much in place there. A lot of these localities are still dealing with miles and miles of development and easements and landowners and right-of-ways, but they're interested in developments off of these, or blue ways off of these, or the Reed Creek Blue Ways, which is an item. The Planning Commission has heard some comments on from people about different trail opportunities. I think it's something we need to stay involved with, stay active with, and be supportive of. As I mentioned, the, the Iron Mountain Horse Trail is a whole lot different type of trail. And Ms. Myers can tell it than riding something on the New River Trail. A horse trail is a horse trail, and it's, uh, it's not the easiest to hike across and bike across, but they're all looking at opportunities of how they, they interconnect. Is there a desire even to interconnect in that, in that manner? But, along with Miss Ryan, do you have anything you'd like to add to it or not?
No, just, just like you said, you know, it doesn't affect With County near as much as it does other counties, but it's a pretty cool thing they're doing a lot of work on, so...
I'd like to comment, if we can do anything to get those trail maps out further into a wider distribution. I think that tri-fold they put out has done a lot of good. But how far are we getting it out? How, how is it being distributed to, to bring more people to the trails?
Mr. Williams and I just had some discussion about it. Pulled out another box of those maps and talked about getting them back out, getting them distributed to people so that they can use them, using the website data, using our Facebook, social media to, you know, even if it's just highlighting a trail. You know, take one of the trails off the map, bring it up there and highlight it one week and say, you know, do this. I would like to do it in conjunction with what the state of Virginia was doing with the Crush Fridays initiative that they have, where they were trying to encourage people to get out and enjoy what is here and use your vacation days that we are all guilty of anymore, of not using all the vacation days, and take a Friday off and go out and visit one of the trails. And I think we need to be promoting our trails as locations for visitors across the state to come to and, and use some of our trails.
Along that same vein, if, if the board members had those maps when we do travels or interaction with, with other groups, like, like when we go to the annual Association of Counties or now that we have the Supreme Leader of the Bay Corps with us, that's, that's a synergic effect of one-on-one. If you've got those tri-foals with you and you're talking to somebody about how great the river is or how the mountain trails are, and you can give them that tri-fold. I, I know some of my Carolina contacts, they've actually come here and spent the weekend and were thrilled for biking and hiking. But we don't do enough to promote our activities ourselves, I think. It's not only a staff responsibility, it's everybody's responsibility to tell people what we've got here.
Yeah, can I interject about the horse community? I take care of Iron Mountain and Hungry Horse and then people down in Galaks, the local horse community, I carry them. I've got them at Sportsman's Warehouse in Brono. I put them everywhere, and I make sure everybody I come in contact with, if they haven't seen, they know about it, and I hand them out. So I have a case of those in my car at all times, and I try to cover as many people as possible that might be interested. And I don't, I specifically don't give them to people that'll throw them away. I make sure they are user-friendly.
Thank you.
That's really, really important.
And I will say, in May, we have the Bay Corp Board of Directors being here in With County, and I'll make sure each one of them go back with a pamphlet.
All right. Anything else on the trails or anything? Now, the next item is just Apex Status. We have a paved parking lot now, or ninety-five percent paved parking lot. There's a little bit work left to finish the parking lot, but that's been very critical, an item we've been pushing because that gives us our handicap parking area. The pavers, I went out yesterday hoping to see paving. I did not see paving going on, made some phone calls. I understand pavers are supposed to be there today. Mr. Vaughn and I neither one have been out there yet this morning, but hopefully when this meeting's over, we'll go out there and see that paving is in process to finish that. The understanding was it was going to be finished as of last week, but that, that did not happen. Inside, they are still doing some final touch-up work, the speed of which I wish were increasing, and that's, that's why I went down there yesterday just to see what all had been done with the final aspects. final aspects where that's going on. The gentleman from Bleacher Builders has all of the frames up. They are starting to put some of the seats on to the framework to install on the base frames, but that work is supposed to be started or completed, or start again the first of January. So I was hoping that the bleachers would be installed at this point in time. Time-wise, it is making it very tight to make certain that everything's ready for the first event scheduled for January 18th and 19th, which is an indoor motocross event. The good news is with them, they're fine with the floor exactly like it is. They can go with the floor the way it is. The week after that is a rodeo event, and they've looked at it and are fine with the floor like it is, so the floor area should be ready to go. It's just a matter of the contractor finishing up the last items, punch list items. Water is on in the facility. They were testing some of the areas. Hopefully, by the end of this week, all the toilets and urinels and bathroom sinks and everything will be fully tested, and everything is released and good to go there.
Able to get the heaters fixed?
The exterior regulator, Paul Prokhor, has been fixed. Southern area is coming back and double-checking the actual heaters to make sure that all that is the correct orvis's regulator thing on those.
I don't know if those are regulators on the heaters that have been replaced, or they've been replaced now?
Yesterday, if I may jump in here, yesterday when I talked to Jamie about it, they have eight regulators there for the eight heaters. They said we may not have to replace all of them, but we've got all eight of them, and Southern Air is supposed to be there today to do all the checks and tests, and if they need to be replaced, they've got them sitting there to replace.
Is Hall going to pick up any expense for that?
That's between, we'll work with RGM and Hall on that and see.
Hall is our, or the authority's contract.
Yep.
Do you know what the operating pressure is for this?
There, at the regulator, we're doing 15 inches more. The regulator is supposed to drop back down to about one inch or so, half, half to an inch.
Well, they were there when they turned on the gas one day. I mean, that's not a problem.
Yeah, they're suspicious that they just had a bad regulator that was installed. But they've replaced it. In fact, they upgraded it, gave us a little extra more. We're up to 1.4 max MVTUs that we can get in there now with new regulator. They increased it to another $200,000. So, for nothing. So, they're working with us.
I had one question. And I know you've been extremely busy and exposed to the weather. Have we made any progress on getting a flag up inside the building before the events start?
We have not, and I am trying to work through the authority on that as well, and see if they can assist us with that through all the marketing and SMG that they're working with in the process. But they're meeting at 12 noon today, so, but we have not done that. Also, ideally, we need to be working with them, looking at outside flags, entrance flags, naming signs, things like that on it as well.
And if I may, just got an update from the on-site inspector. He said pavers are here today.
Does that mean there's pavement being put on the ground?
That just means they showed up.
Well, this constable, he has trucks lined up coming down from his asphalt, so.
As a result of the paving not being done, I will ask when you get to the end of the agenda here and the payment of invoices, I'm recommending pulling off of the current pay app that's on the agenda and approving a different pay amount because of the asphalt not being done at this time. So, I'll get to that when we get to the end of the agenda. Next item is just the rules of procedure and meeting calendar. Just have included this in the board package once again for review, discussion, and we need to have adoption of this at the beginning of our first meeting in January.
Can I have a question about the calendar?
Yes.
Mr. Bear. Mr. McRoberts has been so kind to add some dates off for the county employees, which I think they do deserve. But instead of waiting until, you know, the week before, can we go ahead and add a couple of those to the calendar, look into it, Good Friday being one of them, which is April 19th? And then, we just recently did the 26th of December, but it looks like we have a meeting the 27th, so possibly look at the 23rd of December instead. That way employees have a little bit of time to prepare if they need to travel.
That would be fine. The Good Friday has been a Friday that the board has traditionally given off. If y'all would like to amend this calendar to show that as a holiday, a local holiday, we can add that to the calendar if that's what the board would like.
We'll make that into a motion.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend the calendar to give employees April 19th, which is Good Friday.
Oh, six.
Do I need to do that separate or together? Okay. And did you all want to agree to the 23rd, or do the 26th then?
I think the day after Christmas. I don't know. I don't have kids, Martha.
Well, Martha, you tell us with a board meeting the next day, which is the 27th.
If it's the 23rd, I'd hit you 21st, 27th, 23rd, 24th, 25th. And if people like go out and go to Florida, have family in other states and stuff, it doesn't be longer time to get there a little bit before Christmas gives them a prayer time in that way.
I'd like to also add to my motion to, for December 23rd to be added as employee holiday.
That's second.
I'll second it.
I have a motion to second any other discussion. Here none, I would say aye.
Uh.
I oppose. So, we add them to the calendar for the coming year.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
County Attorney's report.
I did not have anything to report.
Don't have nothing to report. Okay, we're going to call supervisor's report. Mr. Paul Blackley, District.
Getting over Christmas. Hope everybody has a good new year. It's, I've enjoyed sitting here the last 12 months. Went by quick. I don't have any complaints. I'm still in the Christmas spirit. Enjoy it.
Okay. Wes Whipple.
Nothing at this time.
East Whipple.
I have nothing at this time.
Oh, Fort Chester, District.
Nothing today.
Landmine District.
Only thing is, I've had a couple of calls about the noise ordinance, and it's basically the same one. It was against changing it, starting with the same people. They're according to her, the man that was giving all the problems down there, he's starting up again. He told us the other, that we had abolished the noise order.
The noise ordinance is still in effect, the previous lease price, it hasn't changed.
That's all right.
Speaker, District.
Have we had any information back on anything about the feet lot? Are they still checking on it? Do they check on it routinely? There's a strip over there that you can see where there has been manure around, clean off of the heels, right down into the ditch. So, I would like somebody to go out there and look at it, so at least they know about it.
We will contact VDOT and VDOC's both, and you and just let them know about it. I appreciate the information. Have not heard anything else from them since earlier in the year when we had the conversation.
Well, I mean, I feel like we waste our time talking to them anyway about it, but keep arguing, maybe they'll eventually decide that they need to do something about it.
Is this in the drainage ditch, or is this in the road, or is this?
It's in the drainage ditch.
Drainage ditch.
It looks to me like it's going down the hill, and it looks to me like it's also starting to fill in the...
Stormwater management.
Well, the, no, the yard at that, at the Fowler house there at the bottom there. I mean, nobody's living there, but they're trying to sell it, and I don't know why anybody would ever want to buy it.
We'll follow up with him.
All right. I think that was all I had.
I have, I don't have anything. I had some road complaints earlier in the month, and I already emailed them to Mr. Russell, and he said he could look into it. At this point in time, I've noticed that we've been here for a little while. We will take a 10-minute break, but we are in recess. Okay, I see everybody's back. I'll call us back to order, recess. Next item on our board. Ken, that is your business. Entertaining motion approved in the Senate Council.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion seconded in the Senate Council.
Yeah, I have, the pay raises, the state pay, that's a mistake, the pay raises.
Pay raise from Commonwealth Attorney was, it's within their top board allotted budget. His shifting of the personnel in there and the set of the positions, yes, that's correct.
Any other questions? Your members will call voting for all.
Uh.
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 Next item is fiscal year 2019 expenditure budget for the third quarter for appropriations, third quarter appropriations. Entertaining motion approved.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion seconded. Any questions on the third quarter appropriations? Here none. We'll roll call vote.
Uh.
Uh.
Mr. Chairman, both sides. Mount Rogers Community Service, fiscal year 18, financial statement. Anyone have any questions? Mr. Bear on their financial statement. If not, entertaining motion to accept.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, second, seven. Accept the financial statement. Any other questions or discussion? Here none. We'll roll call vote.
Uh.
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 And the chair both sides. Next item, appointments.
Mr. Chairman, I have included this end of the agenda. With several appointments expiring December 31st, what I have highlighted are some of those that are groups outside of here that meet. Obviously, all of your committee appointments, budget building grounds and all those would take place following the first of the year meeting. I would request, if it's okay with the board, obviously, we may need to have a water committee meeting and some others prior to our next board meeting following our discussion earlier. I would request that we just leave the committee members as are up until the first meeting for those. But some of these others will be having meetings possibly before our board meeting. Terms are expiring, didn't know if you wanted to reappoint any of these today, or we'll just leave them in place and do the reappointments on January 8th. But obviously, the four members of the Appalachian Regional Exposition Center Authority are four positions that expire December 18th. They're on staggered terms, and these are the four that came up now. Corey Aker, Mr. Hufford is shown on there. Mr. Hufford is no longer on there. That's not updated. Bob Litten and Tam Toppin. Then the Crossroads Regional Industrial Facility Authority, I don't think we're scheduled to meet prior to our January 8th meeting. I don't know about your District 3 governmental cooperative, what your schedule is on it.
Well, I suggest we leave them all, everybody in place until our day meeting in January. And this is the reason why it's not the first meeting. I won't be here the first meeting of the month. The Bounty Commission meets on Monday the 7th. I will be attending that. The Governor's Forum on the Budget, it's on the 8th. I will be there. And if nothing happens, then I'll have a meeting with the Governor on the 8th, too. I have executive board meeting at BACOR on the 9th, and I will be in Portland, DC the 9th, 11th. So, I'll be gone that whole week. And also, I have a meeting with the House Finance Committee Chairman, Mr. Ware, that week. So, if anybody has any objections to that, just pointing to the last month, last meeting of the month, reappointing all the outstanding committee appointments as far as District 3 and all of them. Anybody have any objections to doing that?
Mr. Bear, is there anything you can tell us in open session about the status with the Rescue Squad? Have you met with them yet?
Yes, I have met with, met with the Rescue Squad, reviewed their current situation, reviewed the status of where they are. I had a meeting with, let me clarify here, Witten County Rescue Squad, had a meeting with a couple of our board members and myself just to talk a little bit about their financial concerns. I shared those concerns with the Fire and Rescue Committee as well. And I met with the members of the Board of Directors of the Witten County Rescue Squad, reviewed where they were financially, where they were with oversight and management, and expressed my concerns to them. The board expressed some similar concerns and were taking some steps to, of oversight into it. They did submit invoices in to be paid, and you've got in your invoice register here a list of, or an amount to pay to Witten County Rescue Squad. This was paid out to them last Friday as a prepay, after review with the committee members and those in the process. They feel like that they understand the problems they've got and have started making the necessary changes to right the ship that had gotten a little bit askew.
After your meeting with them, does it seem like they can overcome that in the future and not keep having this same problem?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Last item on our board, entertaining the invoices.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend the removal of the RGM pay request in the amount of $312,094.56 to leave you a final approval payment of $529,760.30. It's in the package. And then I would request a separate motion to authorize payment of the pay application in front of you.
Okay. Entertaining motion to approve the invoices with the standard recommendation.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion seconded. Any other invoices, any board member would like to pull out and discuss or remove? Any other invoice, any board member would like to pull out and discuss or remove?
Can we discuss that one a little bit?
Which one?
The one you just did. Did that adjustment, did that take into consideration that they had paid cash for the asphalt, or is that, did that?
What this does, Mr. Vaughn took into the percentage that they had done on the job, and this is what they paid. The amount that were taken off is $312,000. I'm recommending that we still authorize a payment to them of $243,504, which includes the 48%, 49% completion on the asphalt.
Okay.
For work in place, for work worth of this, separate.
Do that one separate.
Okay. Any other questions? Here none, we'll roll call vote, Mr. Vaughn.
Aye.
The chair of both sides. I have a motion to take that payment to RGM in the amount of $243,504.56. Entertaining motion to approve. That was second.
Second.
I have a motion to second any other discussion. I have an explanation on it. Here none, we'll roll call vote, Mr. Vaughn.
Aye.
The chair of both sides. Okay, with that being done, any board member have anything else to strike for the board at this time? Here none, Mr. Bear, you have anything else to strike for the board?
The only thing I will note, you were talking about the schedule there early in January. January 7th, Monday, January 7th, is the, a couple of the Tobacco Commission committees will be meeting that day, and their reception is that night in Richmond. The full committee will be meeting on January 8th. I, with the, you do have a grant application in to the Agricultural Committee for the barn.
And they need it 3:00 PM.
3:00 PM on the 7th. I had every intention of going to help, to try to drum up support and make certain we get funded. However, the Planning Commission has a very large variance request that's been brought before them for the Lead Mines subdivision that unfortunately is probably going to require my attendance. I think Mr. Vaughn and Ms. Castle would appreciate, so I'm not certain I'd be able to make it. The chairman will be up there. If anyone else is interested in attending, please let Ms. Collins know, and we can try to get you up there. Can't be two places at the same time.
I want to see if you have to drive separate from me, but I'll be back for a whole week.
Well, I could, and we need to be there. I truly believe in face time with that group, and we've made some inroads with different members that, just there and saying hello to them and...
I will talk to the Apex Authority when they meet later and see if any of them are looking at going up.
All I'd like is have somebody to drive down and back with me. That's not a big day trip, I mean.
Well, if you go, really...
If you're going, you need to go to the reception that night as well.
The whole commission members, also, and come back on Tuesday morning.
Are we aware, and then we meet that night?
Yes.
That Tuesday night. See if you can drum up some Apex member that I can drive to Richmond and back without killing one of them.
All right.
They'll clean that up in a minute.
I regret that I can't go, but I...
I know the video.
Sorry, I don't mind the video.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. And the legislative day, Ms. Collins has sent out the information of that for the end of January.
How many, did anybody get back with you? How many going to the...
I don't know, I was debating.
I mean, our big guy needs your support. Somebody's got to carry the palm boughs in, you know, and throw the rose petals down.
Oh, okay.
Gene, you can sit next to me during dinner, come on.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.